Regular meeting of the Waynesboro Planning Commission, Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Mr. Ari, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I certainly would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? Does somebody want to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Has everyone a chance to review the minutes of the meeting held May 17th, 2022?
Yes.
Motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the afternoon.
Everyone in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, public comment period for items not on the agenda. I see we have a large portion of the public hearing today. So we need to have a public hearing on Mitchener Properties. Is that guy gonna come today? Is Mitchener gonna come?
He'll be.
Okay, okay. Wait, let me get my cheat sheet notes out here. So, Alison, are you gonna present for them?
I will.
Well, I'll let you do, I do that before we open the public hearing. And this is a public hearing request by Mitchener Properties LLC to amend zoning ordinance, section 98.1.5.3.3b, parking maximums amending the requirements for parcel zoned HB within the corridor overlay district to require screening for parking in excess of maximum allowed. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. So this application is for amendment of the parking maximum section of the zoning ordinance, And now all of a sudden, it's not working. Ah, there we go. Thank you. Okay, so the applicant, Mitchener Properties LLC, has requested an amendment to the parking maximum ordinance to allow for a commercial development where the potential uses require more than what is currently allowed under the parking maximum. And this is for specifically parcel zoned HB in the corridor overlay district. This is a map of our corridor overlay district. You can see it goes from West Main Street along Broad Street to East Main, along the I-64 corridor, Delphine Avenue, Ivy Street, to the city boundary from Hopeman, and then the Rossar Avenue corridor. And the potential development is along the Rossar Avenue corridor through here that the applicant has brought the amendment for. So the current ordinance reads that non-residential uses requiring 50 or more parking spaces may not provide more than 110% of the minimum number of spaces required under the parking ratio requirements of section 98-5.1.3.3c. However, this maximum shall not apply to parcels that are located in HB districts, which is our highway business district, that are not in the corridor overlay district. And the amendment is focusing on the second sentence in this, as the ordinance currently reads. And so our proposed language that staff has worked with both the zoning department and the applicant on says, keeps that first part, that non-residential use requiring 50 or more parking spaces may not provide more than 110% of the minimum number of spaces required under the parking ratio requirements of the section. And then the new, or the proposed amendment reads, "This maximum shall not apply to parcels located in HB district. However, for parcel zoned HB within the corridor overlay district, parking spaces in excess of this maximum shall be screened from view from the corridor by either of the following or any combination thereof: the principal structure, or a solid fence or masonry wall that's at least six feet in height, and has a minimum of a five-foot vegetative planting strip with at least 12 shrubs or trees per 100 linear feet." So that is the proposed change. The original ordinance was intended to protect the view shot of the city's entrance corridors. Primarily, or one of the ways was preventing large parking lots from fronting on these roads, so you wouldn't have this big massive swath of pavement as you're coming into the city or leaving the city you're traveling through. And a good example of this right now is the large parking lot over by the Big Lots and the Harbor Freight that was constructed before this corridor overlay district was in effect. And this big massive parking lot is just not very visually appealing, which is part of the reason for the corridor. You can see the CVS, which is about a block before you get to the Harbor Freight if you're coming into Waynesboro at the corner of West Main and Pelham Drive. You can see through the side in the building, there's some, two rows of parking strip along the side of the building with the, most of it fronting on the Pelham, Pelham Drive. And you also have some landscaping aspects there as well. And so this change relaxes that parking maximum requirement, and so that you can allow more uses there, but also requires that screening. So you can, you can put a larger parking lot if you need, if the use requires it, but then you also have that screening, either through placing the building closer to the road and moving the parking around, or by having that fence and masonry structure with that vegetative buffer. And this, again, would only impact the parcels that are zoned HB within the corridor overlay district. And a quick look at the parcels that are currently zoned HB that would be impacted by this change is shown on this map. It's primarily West Main Street and in the Rossar Avenue corridor, and some other places scattered in. And then here is a decent example of what that fence or wall and the vegetative buffer might look like. This is a parcel that's out in the basic city area, and it has what I think is probably a cinder block wall. And then, it's not, it's a little wider than a five-foot vegetative strip, it's more like 10 feet, I think, but you can see they've got a mixture of trees and shrubs in there, and that once they matured, it would provide an effective screening between the street and then what's behind. And finally, so staff is recommending this amendment. We believe it will provide for additional economic development opportunities, along with improved quality of life for residents of Waynesboro. And we believe that because of the screening through the siding of the building or the wall with the vegetative planting strips, it'll have a minimal impact on the visual character of the entrance corridors. And as Luke mentioned, the applicant is not going to be here tonight, they weren't able to make it, but I can't answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, they, we felt that it would make more sense to go ahead with this, since we wanted to keep the, keep the restaurant situation moving, so, yeah.
I do have a couple of questions. For the, is that for a, for the full, like the shopping area center, or is it for each business, like the additional parking? So are we talking about like a large strip? Or are we talking about?
It would be for the individual parcels and the development on those parcels.
Well, what I mean is, and would this be, like, once you amend this, would that mean that any business comes in, like there was a used car dealer, puts up a fence, parks 75 cars there, and it's a, you know, a concrete wall? And if it was six feet high, would that meet the requirements? I guess what I'm asking is, when I think about, you know, masonry walls, you could have somebody come up, put any type of fence up, any kind of masonry, like a concrete wall, it could be ugly. It's six feet tall, but the shrubs only have to be five, and they're spaced, and to me that could be not so attractive. That's, I'm saying for a used car dealer, for instance, nothing against used car dealers, but if they want to park, have, want to have 75 spaces there, and they just put a six-foot tall fence, that's not, and it's not specifically in the amendment that says that they can put any type of fence up, I don't really like that particular part of it. I think it needs to be a little better defined.
A little more specific than, what?
Yeah, because I mean, you could have someone come up and look really pretty bad right on your lane, playing over like Rossar.
I will say with the car dealership, those have quite a bit of allowed parking already, so this would really be only if they want to exceed that, and only the parcels, only the parking spaces that exceed that allowed maximum are the ones that would have to be screened. I don't know that it's gonna be a huge, huge change. We haven't had any car dealerships really ask to push the parking maximum so far, but, but yeah, you're, you're right that, you know, you can't control what the wall or fence exactly looks like, and we could put more definitions on it, but it starts to get wonky to enforce.
I would just have, because I'm thinking of a cinder block wall, but would not look very nice. It's not as decided to do that.
Let me comment on that, and this was my something, because you do have the plantings in front of the wall. I wonder if we want to put in there plant and maintain. I've had experience in the towns I worked for where, yeah, it was planted, and six years, well, in six months it all died, or six years later they cut it down. Just think about that. I've, I've seen that happen, and nobody said anything down the road, but I did notice
We, this, it's inside the city, Waynesboro, sort of limited number of parcels that this property applies to, right?
Right.
And from what I understand, what I read, maybe I'm, it's sort of where the required footprint of, say, a chain restaurant, a restaurant comes in and says it has to have 65 parking spaces, and by our, our zoning math, you can only have 62, so that restaurant walks away from Waynesboro, right?
Right.
Is that kind of what I'm talking about, what we're talking about?
That's the, that's the specific situation here. I mean, obviously, this would apply to all other.
Right, and I think, I think if somebody's gonna come and want to build here, they're gonna want to make their business be, in this, in this situation, they're gonna want to make their business be successful, and I think this is a nice, say, you know, we're saying you can't put them in the front of the building, you have to make it look decent. I think it's a, it's a okay way to, to meet the needs of the, the franchisee or whatever, as well as meeting the needs of protecting Waynesboro's entrance corridors. Because certainly, too bad we can't change the old IGA, you know? It'd be really nice if we could make them do something, but we can't. But at the same time, we don't want to turn business away, but, I mean, I'm not sure that we need to walk away and, you know, I don't feel like we're selling our soul to the devil for a few parking spaces.
Is there a sense that the parking in the back is superior entering corridor architecturally or whatever to a wall? Is that like better for the city between the two, but we're just giving them two options?
Yeah, I guess this goes to the, sort of the design of the, of the street wall. If you move the, Luke and I were talking about this earlier today, if you, if you move the building closer to the street, it creates a better sense of, of space, so that's one way of doing it. And then, yeah, the, the wall and the vegetative strip would, would, or fence would provide an alternative method if they want to have that parking in front or need that parking in front because of the site. It allows that opportunity.
Probably more if it's likely to be on the side, you know? Every business is gonna want their building to have eyeballs, you know, be up front, so they're not gonna put a wall in front of their business, but, yeah.
Well, I'd say get rid of the wall thing and just not make it arbitrary, and then just say, you can do it, but you gotta put it behind the business, and, and that's where it's gotta go. It can't go in front of the business.
Yeah, I guess.
That, that could be better.
Geography might.
Would they have to, would it be automatic, or would they have to come back to the planning commission with their plan?
Uh, this would be a, a change to the by right stuff. This would not be conditional use permit or anything like that.
Right, this would be.
And it wouldn't just apply to these, these particular applicants, it would apply the overlay district across the board. We're changing the actual zoning for that district.
Yes, all HB zone parcels in the overlay district, yes.
Right.
See, Alison had a great map of all the ones affected.
And otherwise, they'd have to comply with the parking for their particular.
Size.
Mm-hmm. What is it?
Size lot, and I guess anticipated customers. But it's, I think, you know, I think we need to consider this rather than these huge parking lots, I mean, even Walmart. And it used to be required, and, you know, you drive by any Walmart, Sam's, Costco, you know, and you've got this huge lot that's not filled, and, and becomes a water runoff issue.
And we have, it's probably not great, but we have a pretty narrow window for them, so in these entrance, we, on the one hand, have a parking minimum still, we still have a pretty traditional set of parking minimums calculated by floor area and all that. But then we also now, in the corridor overlay district, have this parking maximum, which is 110%, so there's really only like this 10% window that all businesses were, were pretty closely legislating exactly how much parking they have to have. Probably would be better to, for there to be some flexibility. I would prefer in the end, eventually, that we had flexibility down also, but, but yeah, this will give them a little flexibility up. Mr. Ari, I do have a question about the plant and maintain. I mean, to me, that language sounds great, but I'm not sure, would, my understanding is that the zoning ordinance is really only gonna be enforceable sort of at the moment the use is approved, or when the site plan is coming in, so I'm not sure if there's, if we can point to, if there's something about maintain in the zoning ordinance, is there any enforcement mechanism later on? Have you, did you ever use that in your, in Bluefield?
We had a car wash in an inappropriate area, and they were to plant pines, and within, they died.
Right.
They got so big and died, and then it opened up, and it was just ugly. Something to consider, because if they die, then you have your wall, yeah, your wall's still there, but that might be ugly.
True.
Would it be too much just to ask someone just to, you know, you can get like a rendering, it doesn't have to take a lot of effort, but just have a rendering or withdrawing with a proposed, I mean, if you could see that, then I, you know, would feel better if they had to do that.
Right.
Each time if a new business did this, because again, you could get a business that, I mean, I mean, I love the fact that businesses want to come in, because I'd love to see the city go through, good for the city, but I'm just afraid, you know, when you put something that broad, I'm thinking anything could come in on that corridor, and all of a sudden, it may be something you don't want, but once it gets into zoning, you, like, you can't really do anything about it.
And I've had similar experiences as well in other municipalities, where it's just hard to enforce what looks good to me might look bad to somebody else.
As far as this goes, I believe that it will be looked at as part of the landscaping plan in the site review process.
Yeah.
And we would look at what they're planning to do to screen, and then give them feedback based on that.
Yeah, we do that already with site plan review. I mean, when we go through, we definitely work with each of them and try to get them to do something that, that looks good and all, but like you're saying, it's, it's hard to put that stuff in, aesthetic, aesthetic stuff is hard to put into an ordinance, because if people have different opinions, and you don't want to get into a discretionary thing where, you know, it's, it's not predictable, that you want it to be predictable for them how long it will take to get their review done.
Well, back to what you were saying about the wall probably being on the side or something, like, I own two pieces of property with the road front of Gen 250, and the last thing I would want to do, no matter how many parking spaces I needed, was to put up a six-foot wall in front of my building. So I would think that, that most of them, the wall would not, I mean, they would do everything they could to avoid blocking off the entrance to their building, right? I mean, I think that's not really practical to assume that most places are gonna want to do that.
I wouldn't have thought so, and also, the ordinance allows for about a double row of parking.
In front of the.
In front of the building, so that they can have some parking there, they just can have the larger areas.
Right.
Right there.
Right.
And most major chains and businesses, like Luke said, are gonna place the building on the track of land where you get the most eyeballs on it. That the parking is gonna be probably on the sides and around back, but you're gonna see the logo of whatever come here to, so that you know that, hey, you come into this place, you know, we, we're, we're here for business.
And trust me, there will be people who don't maintain their walls, I know all about that.
Oh, yeah, I'm just ringing through whether we could, whether we could put in an enforcement mechanism for that, and I'm, I'm not 100% sure, answer to your question.
Well, you had a prime example of that down there at, across from the barn, where those two guys come in, was gonna put the stereo car dealership, they put the six-by-sixes down there, planted their little four-inch pansies, and I swear, I don't think they ever opened up.
No, they did not.
I could, I could support this if we got rid of the wall thing. I think it just keeps it simple.
So do you just want to allow them to go over the parking maximum, or you want to retain the landscaping?
Yeah, I'm, I would allow them to go over the maximum, but just they've gotta keep it in the back of the building. They, they can't put it out front, like Big Lots, and we're not doing that anymore.
What about the sides?
Yeah, that'd be fine with me.
That sides or back?
Well, like, like the CVS, where they put it on the side with Pelham, you know, that's not the corridor. I think that's fair play, but they didn't put it out front.
I mean, in a sense, you don't really even need the maximum then, because our corridor overlay district already requires them to have a max 90-foot setback, you know? So they already can't move the building back very far.
Right.
So if you're okay with it being on the sides and back, then we, we may not even, I mean, we may not need the parking maximum, I don't know, but, so you kind of already got that with the setback, is all I'm saying.
Like I said, most businesses probably aren't gonna put up a fence, because like Shannon said, you put up a six-foot fence in front of her building, you probably wouldn't even see her building.
And I agree with that, I just think it, there's too much left to interpretation, and, you know, most people would do the right thing, and, but there'd always be the examples of the people that didn't, and just wouldn't care what people thought about that, and, um.
Yeah, but we're talking about major businesses coming in along an entry corridor. You're not talking about Bubba and the station wagons pulling a barbecue pit up, setting it in a gravel parking lot, firing that thing up on Sunday, and selling barbecue out of.
And not today.
So can you guys be a little bit more specific about the applicant that has triggered this? Like, does the wall apply to them? I mean, be specific without being specific.
Yes, the, the site plan that we've seen from the, the applicant's applying for this because they have two major national sit-down restaurant chains that want to come here, who, one of their requirements for siding here is being able to put a certain amount of parking that exceeds our maximum by a dozen or so, basically, something like that. And so the solution that they came up with, with us, was to do this screening for, so the plants that I've seen have the restaurant footprints up front, and they have parking, you know, double row parking the way we allow up front, and they have additional parking towards the back, that's sort of off to the side of the building, and so they were proposing that the stuff that's farther in the back, off to the side of the building, they would put sort of a wall, so everything that was beyond that allowable parking maximum would be.
Oh, so you just say you have to park behind the wall if you're in the extra parking?
Right.
Okay, see, I think, to me, that makes it the whole situation a little bit clearer. When I first read through it, I had visions of, we're gonna put it up in front so they can see.
No, 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 sorry, yeah, maybe we should have given you a diagram.
Yeah, no, no, now it makes more sense, and now, so you're talking about shielding off only the excess parking?
Excess, yeah, so if, can you go back to the?
Okay, that makes much more sense.
The ordinance?
That's kind of what I thought, but it wasn't 100% sure.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, parking spaces in excess of the maximum should be screened.
Should be screened, oh, so that, that makes.
It's not all the parking, yeah.
Okay, so you're not, yeah.
It just provides an option if there's additional.
Right, right.
Yeah, my concern was like, you know, the capability, it's fine that businesses here, but if they, they do shut down, we know that happens.
Uh-huh, right.
And to have all that parking, so are we not, do we not allow parking, that excessive parking in the front of buildings now?
No, not on the, not on the.
Not an entrance corridor.
No, like ten yards or?
No, no, you're talking about existing ones, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that, that's what really looks bad, both of those sat empty for a good while.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, we already have, we already have in the corridor low, corridor overlay district, a maximum setback of 90 feet. So nowadays, you couldn't build those, nowadays, you would need to build those buildings up towards the front, you could have some parking in front.
So all we're talking about the wall is just shielding the, over the maximum parking?
Yeah, the wall would, the wall would most likely be behind, like, I can't envision a situation which the wall would not be behind the facade of the building.
Yeah.
Towards the back, yeah.
All right.
It would just, it was just an additional option, maybe, maybe the only.
I'm good with it.
Maybe the site's set up so that they could only get that additional few parking spaces to the side.
And who knows, maybe that's the parking for employees.
Right, right, I'm, now, that, that, to me, I, I kind of like understood it, but I didn't quite understand it, so now that makes, I'm, I'm all for it, I say we do it.
I am too.
I say we do it. But I, we need to have a public hearing about it.
Would, just one other thing, does Ludewitt fall in this? Because that's where, okay.
No, we proposed that a while back, and y'all said no.
Yeah, I understand.
So this is, this is just the, the ones that are in the corridor.
That's where the growth might be.
Yeah, so they, they are not, they don't have any parking maximum, maximum.
Okay.
Obviously. Okay, so we need to open the public hearing. So, get back to my white sheet. I need to open a public hearing on request by Mitchener Properties to amend zoning ordinance, section 98.1.5.3.3b, parking maximums amending the requirements for parcel zoned HB highway businesses within the corridor overlay district to require screening for parking in excess of maximum allowed, as Alison read to us. Anybody, you have any email notes or anything from anybody?
No.
No. Okay, so I'm pretty sure I can close the public hearing. Close public hearing. Anybody want to discuss or make a motion or anything?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed amendment as revised.
Second.
Okay, everyone in favor of adopting the pro, proposed amendments to amend zoning ordinance, section 98.1.5.3.3b, parking maximum? Parking maximums amending the requirements for parcel zone HB highway business within the corridor overlay district to require screening for parking in excess maximum allowed, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone who's not in favor?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries anyway, Laurie.
It was safe.
I don't know, whoever gets so excited at my meetings. Thanks, Laurie. Now we have a second consideration amendments to the subdivision ordinance. Revisit this baby.
Sorry, a lot of, yeah, tough code today. It's a good day to be a lawyer on the planning commission. Last month, I presented you the subdivision ordinance amendment proposal. Just to quickly recap a couple of things. This is our current process for a major subdivision. Again, a major subdivision is any subdivision that requires the applicant to construct public improvements, really, you know, pipes, roads, et cetera, especially roads. Currently, they have to submit a preliminary plat and that comes before you and then city council. Then they submit a public improvement plan, which is reviewed by staff and that includes all their detailed construction drawings. And when that's approved, they start building. And then, once they have either bonded or completed and had inspected all their infrastructure that's supposed to be transferred to the city, they can submit a final plat, which they can then record at the courthouse and start selling lots. So that's our current process. Again, the state changed a couple of rules. One is they said that you cannot any longer require an applicant to submit a preliminary plat for less than 50 lots subdivisions. So now we have some major subdivisions, those with less than 50 lots. They're still major subdivisions in our ordinance, but we can't require them to do a preliminary plat. And I mentioned that the Waynesboro marketplace where the Chipotle and Popeyes are going up is kind of in that situation. They didn't have any preliminary plat, but they did have some public improvements to construct as part of that. And so they just submitted those to the city and we approved them administratively. Anyway, we need to update our ordinance here and we recommended a couple of, it really boils down to two big changes. The first is we want to get city council out of reviewing by right subdivisions. Again, sort of best practice is that they should not, elected officials shouldn't be voting on things that are.
By right.
By right, yeah. And then, secondly, what do we do with preliminary plats for subdivisions under 50? So last month, I presented you some code language that would simply eliminate those preliminary plats. So they would just be, have, be subject to administrative approval. Y'all wanted to know if we could still keep the planning commission, still have a hearing before planning commission somehow, even if they're below 50 lots. And so I've spoken with our attorneys and come up with an alternate, some alternative language. And this is the language we're proposing. We've still got for major subdivisions of 50 lots or fewer, the subdivider shall have the option to submit a preliminary plat following the process outlined above. And some of them may still do so for certain reasons. But, but subdivision applications without, and this will be major, this is under the major subdivision section. So this would be major subdivisions without a preliminary, that preliminary plat must include both a final plat and a public improvement plan. So they would need to submit both of those concurrently so that we could see where the public improvements were matching up at the final plat. And then the planning commission would hold a public hearing to review the final plat and public improvement plan and consider any recommendations with respect to the same. And then if the planning commission finds that the final plat and public improvement plan conformed to the subdivision ordinance, the planning commission will approve the same, but contingent on the completion of the, of the public improvements or bonding. So basically our process would be, it's a little bit of a stealth preliminary plat, but it, basically you all would give a contingent approval. I was trying to figure out a way to have you all hold this public hearing on these final plats, but not after everything was already built because it's sort of dumb. So here's a situation. The applicant will submit their plat with a public improvement plan concurrently with the staff review. And then planning commission will hold its public hearing and approve that plat, but contingent on the completion of the public improvements. And so then they can build. And then, once it's, the infrastructure's completed or bonded, subdivision agent will sign the plat and allow it to be recorded. So I think this accomplishes what folks were wanting to get out of the system, which is that all of your major plats would still come to planning commission for hearing. This still removes counsel from the process, but it brings, but it retains one public hearing in front of planning commission. And so this, doing this means that probably a lot of folks might be interested in doing a preliminary plat because essentially a preliminary plat would become a way to avoid having to take each of your final plats to planning commission. So if you have a really big subdivision and you're going to phase it over quite a few years, you can come and do the preliminary plat and have that reviewed by planning commission and hold a public hearing. And then each of your final plats can just be administrative after that. So it provides some incentive for that, I think. I think that either this process or the, the one that we recommended before should work fine. Happy to comment on advantages or disadvantages, but I, I don't know that, you know, I have a strong, strong recommendation.
What do you guys think?
As long as it complies with state law, I'm fine with it.
Our attorney believes it does. So the original option that we presented for you would just reduce the number of subdivisions coming before you. So smaller ones could be done, just staff, you just have to trust staff to review them. This option still gives you a chance to comment on them, so it would slow down some of those smaller ones. But, you know, they only have to come to one public hearing still. It's still an improvement over the current system for them. And it would give some opportunity to have input for the commission.
Well, I guess the main thing is we're going from automatic approval without us even seeing of five to 50.
Right.
And that's, that's a big jump.
Shift, yeah. Yeah, the, the number, current, the current five, six number almost doesn't matter because it's really public improvements that are always triggering.
That's a little local landowner doing something.
Right, yeah. Yeah, usually the only times that the number becomes relevant is when, for instance, for some reason, somebody did a whole subdivision and they built their roads and they built their pipes and everything, but then they just didn't finish it. And then they want to come in later and split the lots up. And honestly, at that point, the stuff is built, you know, it doesn't really matter. It's, they've got, they're entitled to subdivision, so. But, yeah, what, what really matters is when they're building road. Anyway.
I don't see anything wrong with that process right there.
Essentially, you're required, I mean, for those, you're required anyway. I mean, it's, it's an automatic, we discussed last time. I mean, it's basically, once it's approved, what you can do is just allow for suggestions maybe to make a little minor.
Right. Yeah, the, I mean, the risk of any, any public hearing is that you present the, the appearance that it's discretionary and you are obligated to approve them if they meet the ordinance. But there are, you know, subdivisions have a lot of little details that, there, there's a lot of space in there to, to tweak things within the ordinance.
And what was the main reason for removing counsel from the process, Luke?
We're almost the only locality around here that does that, that sends them to counsel. Again, it makes it, it makes it hard to meet our review deadlines, having to have that two-month situation. And it just isn't considered good practice to, like I said, to send by right subdivisions there. You, you set up a situation where elected officials are being asked to vote against 30 people in the audience arguing against this development. But meanwhile, we're telling them, you, you have to vote for this.
Yeah.
So now those 30 people need to come here.
Yeah, they need to come here.
They happen sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we always have to, to explain, you know, what's by right and what's not. And, you know, we had the whole, we had the Ivy Commons one, which the Claybrook folks next door weren't very happy about. But they came and they understood that it was by right and, you know, they were picking around, you know, the locations of roads and common area. And that, that's what, you know, the things that you can have input on.
Right.
At that point, so, that's good.
All right, so do we, do I just make a motion to amend?
So we held the public hearing last month.
Right.
The attorney did not feel that this was a substantial enough change, that we needed to hold another one. So you all can go ahead and discuss and pass as, as you, as you would like, so. And this is a, there's no applicant here, so you all would be initiating this amendment.
Okay. So I say we initiate this amendment to comply with state law, but still let us keep our finger in the pot of this alternative process presented by Luke.
Makes sense to me.
Sure, and you're going to say no.
Motion to approve the amendments as presented by staff.
I'll say.
Everyone in favor?
And can you, can you just clarify on the motion, you mean the, the alternative process?
The alternative process.
Brought this month, yeah.
Brought this month by Mr. Judee.
Yes.
Yes. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? I think we like your second suggestion there.
Okay, great.
Yes.
All right.
Good job on that, Luke.
Yes, thank you.
Good job on that. We kind of blindsided.
That was a tricky one. All right, we have Port Republic Neighborhood Plan update.
Lights back on. Don't have any presentation, but I just wanted to let you all know that we held the Port Republic Neighborhood Plan workshop, neighborhood workshop. It was sort of intensive three days workshop with our consultant last, at the end of last month. Mr. Zar Rodney attended one of them. We really appreciate that. It went, I think, quite well. All the neighbors we've been working with were very pleased with it, pleased with the outcome. There was a lot of discussion of wanting, I would say a lot of discussion revolved around wanting to maintain history. You know, the average age of the group that's been involved, this neighborhood plan is, is up there. So a lot of them have a lot of neat memories of the place and, and we're very focused on historical signage and trying to create a long-term, long-term stability for the African-American Heritage Museum. And also, we're very interested in, you know, smaller improvements to the neighborhood as well. You know, they're interested in all that stuff as well. So we're going to put together, over the next few weeks, our consultant is going to help put together an action plan off of that. We had our first follow-up call with them this week. But generally, I would say everyone was very pleased. Do you have any comments on it or something?
No, thank you.
Yeah, any, anything that stood out from it? I'm trying to think of things the planning commission should know about.
As far as maintaining history, Luke, has any of the buildings been applied for, put on a national historical register or the state?
So the, yeah, the whole district, the, the Port Republic area is a, is a national historic district.
Okay.
Yeah, so quite a few of those buildings are contributing structures.
What got it that recognition?
That was back in, the city's three historic districts were all passed back in the 90s when Jim Shaw was planner, late 90s, early 2000s. And so we have three historic districts, the downtown, Tree Streets and Port Republic. And I think a lot of the neighbors brought up, kept bringing up that most people in the city think we only have two and they wanted it to be clear that we had three. So we have a little brochure with neighbor, with a walking tour and information about historic buildings in the downtown. We also have one for the Tree Streets, so our economic development department sent a representative to the workshop and they're going to work on a brochure for Port Public as well.
There's a lot of things too that people brought up that they could do that may not be that costly and more community participation. So I only went to one session, but it was, I thought it was really positive.
Yeah, you have a really strong neighborhood association there, so.
Yeah, they have a great neighborhood association out there.
Anyway, that's that.
All right.
At some point, probably they'll come and present you with the plan.
Anybody else have any correspondence or communications?
I believe this is Mr. Judee's last planning meeting.
Indeed.
And I would like to thank him for his efforts.
Thank you, thank you.
At least for, for the four years that I've been here.
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you all very much. It's been a pleasure to serve here.
Has your replacement been named yet?
Yes, I have a couple of, a couple of personnel things I was going to put, put out there. The first, actually first, before I talk about that, I was going to mention that Allison Tombarch applied and, and was approved by APA to sit for her AICP exams, which is the American Institute of Certified Planners. It's sort of, it's not quite the bar, but it's our, you know, our professional certification. And so she sat for her exams at the end of May, which involved a lot of study all the last spring. And so very soon, we should get those, those results back.
Excellent, excellent.
So I wanted to congratulate her on that. Secondly, yeah, it is my last planning commission meeting, so I just wanted to say thank you all so much. Really, it's been a great, it's been a great time. But yeah, thirdly, the city has made a hire. So our next community development director will be Leslie Tate. Leslie is a graduate of Fort Defiance High School in Augusta County. And she's also, has her master's in urban planning from Virginia Tech. So you've gone from a string of Jim Shaw, Sunny Yang, Michael Barnes, me, all UVA grads to now Allison. And Leslie will both be Virginia Tech grads.
So the Hoagie is ruled.
It will be a, yeah, an upgrade or a downgrade depending on your, your view of the situation. Leslie has been the senior planner, is, she's currently head of the planning for Augusta County, where she's been since, for the last six years and she's done a really good job. I've worked with her on a lot of regional meetings. She's currently the chair of our Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Technical Advisory Committee and I'm the vice chair of it. And she's really exceptional professional and, and, you know, strong command of, of land use issues and stuff. So she was a great get for the city and we're excited to have her on board. And because we were able to, you know, get that hiring process going early, she will actually be starting on Monday. So I'll get a week of overlap with her and we'll be able to hand off a lot of stuff in person, so. But she should be here next month. Allison, did you want to ask about the meeting?
Yeah, speaking of next month's meeting, the Virginia APA conference, which is the state planning conference, is happening from July 17th through 20th, which falls on our planning commission week. And we do have items for the agenda for that meeting. But I was curious to hear your thoughts about canceling the July meeting and pushing the August meeting to that first Tuesday. So that, I would like to go to the APA conference for one and two, that way Leslie's first meeting won't be solo, I guess. But wondered what you all thought about that idea. And also, planning commissioners can't attend the conference for free, so if any of you all are interested in attending, that's a possibility as well. It's being held in Richmond this year in downtown Richmond, so wanted to throw that out there too.
I'm fine with moving the meeting to the first, so this would be the first Tuesday in August?
It would be the first Tuesday in August and that would be August 2nd if we did that.
That works better, actually, for me.
Same.
It's fine with me. Does August 2nd work for you?
What sort of timeframe are we talking about?
Well, August, move the meeting to August 2nd.
Oh, to August 2nd.
Instead, instead of having the regular July meeting, we'd move it to August 2nd because.
It's still 7:00 PM.
Yes, yes.
And then that's going to cover August's meeting as well? Or would we have it again?
Well.
You can have two meetings, but.
It should cover it.
My guess is there won't be another.
There won't be anything probably to do.
I would think in August, so, so, yeah.
Okay, so then.
If there's a lot on the agenda, I think I'll probably have, I'd have to miss the second. It's not, I mean, if I have to miss one.
I think we're able to move meetings ad hoc with, we might have to advertise. We do right now, our official bylaws preserve the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday.
Okay.
The third Tuesday for regular meeting, first two days reserved for work session or extra meetings needed. So it's sort of like easy to already go to the first meeting. But we, I think we can theoretically move it to a different day with advertisements.
What was the dates for those that conference outside of?
July 17th through 20th.
And that's in Richmond?
It's in Richmond. Registration is open right now for it.
What are the kind of things you do there?
Just conferencing stuff, lots of sessions.
There's several field trips that are planned around the city, I know, and yeah, lots of sessions on a variety of topics.
It's nice, I've been to the national conference, not in years, but I went around when I was in school. And it's, it's a little more generic. It's big. It's just a lot of consultants and I never find as much. But I've always gotten value out of the state conference. I used to go every year. And you just see a lot of the people who are planners right around our area there. They always do like legislative updates on latest state law changes. They'll have various sessions, you know, different localities will host a session where they'll talk about whatever they're doing. And so you kind of get to hear about what's going on around the state, things like that.
Is it a conference you can drive back and forth to or do you have to stay in Richmond?
You can go for one day or. You can go for one day or multiple days. We don't have a budget to pay for anybody's hotel rooms.
No, I was just asking.
But yeah, it's multiple days, yeah.
Only other conferences I've been to is every state for the university. It's kind of hard to drive to Texas and back every morning.
Sure. Yeah, you can, you can just register for, you know, only a few day, or only one day or two days.
Is there a deadline we need to tell you that we're interested in going?
I don't think you need to tell us.
Yeah, if you, if you'd like to register yourselves, you can do that.
We can send them the link.
Yeah, I can send you the link to the conference website. I believe early registration ends the end of June, I think. But I also don't think they're going to... I don't think they add a late charge for planning commissioners. But I'll send you all that link.
Yeah, if you can send that link, that'd be good.
Now, follow-up to that. COVID sort of put a halt for a while, and also some things with programs changed. But there's a planning commissioner training that the state does through the Land Use Education Program. And we used to try to get about, you know, at least one or two planners and commissioners to do that every year. And at this point, I believe Slambert has been through it, right? And Mr. Ari has been through it. But I think y'all are our only certified planning commissioners at the moment. But it's just a... Do you want to say a few words about what that training is like, or what is it, what it is?
I didn't know what to expect, because it was during COVID that I actually ended up signing up for it. And there were 36 people from around the state that were actually in my class, all different levels of either... They were city workers, they were on planning commission, they were just a variety of people. But because it was COVID, we all zoomed, right? And it was a 10-week course, but we only met the first week and the last week. And then the rest of the 10 weeks was up to our discretion on how fast we wanted to go through the two books that you have to read and take five tests with each book, so 10 tests in total to get your certification. But the speakers they had and the two teachers that were the moderators for the class were just fabulous. I mean, I think their combined experience was like 70 years of city planning in all different, you know, places and just, I don't know. It just really made you excited to be a part of the process, you know, and really have a real vision for the future of what can happen if you have a really solid planning commission, you know, and really what the roles and responsibilities were. And, you know, I just can't say enough about it. It really was very, very positive. So we, during the Zoom sessions, they'd have guest speakers, and then we'd break out into classes and do like role-playing and different things like that with different people. So you never had the same people in your small group. So you got to know a lot of the people from around the state, so yeah, definitely a plus.
And what was it like when you did it? Sure, you did it when it was the more conventional?
Ours wasn't like that. Who was the fellow that used to do that?
Oh, Mike...
Yeah.
What was his name?
I want to say it's Mike, it's two Ms., Mike, Mike McDonald or something.
Actually, I went before, and he had tons of experience. He'd done it for years and years. And the main thing from it, and it sounds like the format's changed somewhat. The main thing is, though, there's so many different things you never considered that some other community had had an issue with. And it was, you know, those, just asking the folks presenting, "Well, what about this? We had this happen," and that was one of the things that was very helpful. Because it really did cause you to exercise your mind and, "Well, you know, I hadn't thought about that," or "This side or the other."
For us, our class as well, about 90% of the attendees were in communities that were within the next year having to work on a comprehensive plan, like their renewal period was coming up. And so everybody, you know, was sharing their trauma stories, their PTSD from doing the comprehensive plan. And they were talking about all these success strategies, which I thought were really great. And also, it brought up the real subject of how do we pandemic-proof or, you know, attrition-proof our plans? Because this isn't a one-off. These kinds of things can happen. Once it happens, it can happen again. So, you know, making a plan for that instead of just letting it happen, you know. So it really did spur on some very interesting conversation, so...
Mike Chandler is the guy I'm thinking of. He's the guy that's on it forever, yeah.
And doesn't Waynesboro pay for it, right?
So we have, we have money budgeted every year to pay for... I want to say we can, we used to be able to pay for two commissioners to go every year. But if we had multiple commissioners want to go, we'll talk to city managers and move stuff around.
When is it trying and loop?
I am not sure when the next mission is.
It used to be spring and fall.
Yeah, we'll have to...
And for a while, they were doing different locations, not just Richmond. I don't know if that's what they're still doing. I know they used to have one at Virginia Tech.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they still have Zoom or what. Well, we'll try to find that information and get that to you with the APA, with the conference link, so...
Okay. You have anything else to discuss or anything?
Can I just ask a question about the gal that sent in the email that she wanted us all to read? I know she also addressed city council
Yes.
about her concerns on her street with the traffic and the noise and all those things. I noticed that in the June 13 meeting for city council, that was not addressed or discussed or anything. So could you give us an update on, is that being addressed? Will she be getting a response or...?
Yes, so she's already initially contacted staff. And so staff went ahead and, you know, we went and reviewed it, and we put out counters. We did our normal thing with the street and got back to her. And, you know, it's not the answer that she'd hoped for, so... We sort of always provide that as if you don't like what staff tells you, you know, certainly contact your commissioners or your elected officials. And so, but, you know, you all don't have to do anything. If you, if you want to go out and take a look at it, you can. I would just sort of consider you to be an appeal, you know, source of input for appeals. But, I mean, there are lots of things that come to a council like that every week. So I wouldn't necessarily expect them to address it in a meeting unless it really... Yeah. Yeah, the city engineers did feel that it was, yeah.
It's right there. I mean, right where the city shops are, that neighborhood, I mean, it's...
It's going to be busy.
Yeah, that was my biggest problem. I never did, never could figure exactly where she was at on the street.
It was on Bridge Avenue, yeah. Very concerned with, wants that to be a truck restricted and...
Unfortunately, it's like the way trucks go, right?
I know, I was going to say.
Yeah, it's sort of like, we, yeah.
I mean, because if the city shops don't go up Bridge, they got to go all the way back out to Delphi and come down, come through town, and go back.
Right.
Be kind of like your bridge that was over here on Florence Avenue for every three days. The fire trucks had to go all the way down the road and come back.
Yeah, so, yeah, we... And the trucks weren't an overwhelming amount, you know, percentage of the traffic. Kind of felt that we didn't have a lot of speed violations or whatever there, so... Yeah, it's, I mean, as always, I wouldn't ever dismiss any of those complaints, because they're always, you know, someone's experience of living there, and that's, that's an annoyance. At the same time, you know, generally, they've, they've acquired the property, unless there's been a change that caused the situation to come up since they acquired the property. But, you know, they, we, we had a fellow for years and years pushing for changes at an intersection and just was irate that there was so much traffic next to his house. And, but he bought the house six years ago, you know, it was, he bought a house at the intersection. So, you know, that's an element to consider with all that. But certainly, if there's anything we can do to make the experience of living in Waynesboro better for somebody, love to do that, but there's always trade-offs, always costs to that. And we go out and see if those costs are payable.
I think certainly giving their attention and doing the traffic study and whatever is... Shows that your intent is good, you know.
Yeah, because I saw where the guy that came and complained about... Oh, God, I'm showing my age now. The subdivision we just approved behind Buffalo Wild Wings.
Yes, Creekwood Village.
The guy that had the 10 acres that lived over the hill, bought that for retirement. It's up for sale now.
Yeah, so...
But, I mean...
Justin Wells.
Yep. That large a tract of land, I can't believe he didn't think someday there was going to be houses on it.
Yeah, that cost land.
Or a vineyard.
Yeah, definitely encourage people when they buy a house to look at the comprehensive plan. Look at the, yeah, look at the zoning of properties.
Motion to approve? I mean, motion to...
And the meeting?
Adjourn.
Approve at the end of the meeting?
Everyone in favor of adjourning this meeting? I'm going to hit you with this anyhow.